Yeah.
Testing.
Twelve, eleven, ten, nine, eight.
Good evening. The Rio Rancho Public Schools Board of Education meeting for Monday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty five is now called to order. And if all would please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Board Member Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
J C, can you do a roll call for us?
President Galbraith.
Present.
Vice President Morgan. Secretary Tyler.
Present.
Board Member Tripp.
Present.
Board Member Miller.
Present.
We have a call.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to welcome everyone out to our board meeting tonight. We'd like to excuse Vice President Morgan. He got stuck in an airport, and so he will be missed today. He planned on being here today. It just did not happen. And we also like to apologize for starting a couple of minutes late as we were having some technical difficulties. But we'd like to welcome everyone into our boardroom tonight. We have some students and I'm sure teachers here as well as members of the community. And so we're grateful to have you today. Tonight, we'll go ahead and start off with introductory comments by our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Visu Cleveland.
Oh, welcome again. We're glad you're here this evening. We have some awards and recognitions this evening are very special. Andrew Pierce, Rio Rancho Middle School Principal will introduce the New Mexico Associated Secondary Assistant Principal. I didn't get that right, did I? So Principal Pierce, you fix it when you get up here. But this year, the two thousand and twenty five Assistant Principal of the Year Award is from Rio Rancho Middle School, and he will be sharing some information with you regarding her nomination. Guadalupe Gallegos has been a wonderful asset to this district for many years. She also worked at Cleveland High School. We definitely congratulate her on this well deserved honor. This is just a wonderful recognition for the really fine work that she does for that for Rio Rancho Middle, but also for our district every single day. We also, if you recall, not too long ago, we had a group and came and asked you for permission to apply for the RAMP certification. It stands for it's the American School Counselors' Association Model Program for Delivering Comprehensive School Counseling Programs. And so they did submit their application. This national program recognizes schools that provide data informed school counseling programs, and that those programs include the following: A school's commitment to its mission. It encourages school counselors to demonstrate excellence in the field and to provide support for schools to help all of our students. And so we'll have a presentation this evening regarding the RAMP program. We'll ask the principal to please come forward and introduce the folks that are here this evening. That's Christine Prescott. And then we have you probably, as you came in, a chance to see some of the wonderful artwork that was out in the foyer. And some of it was just absolutely amazing. They had an art show ceremony Friday evening, and I was very fortunate to be here for that presentation. They received some recognitions and including some financial recognition from the arts community in Rio Rancho. And it was a very, very nice event. But if you didn't get a chance to look at some of the artwork that's out there, I hope it'll take a few minutes to do so because some of it's just impressive. Every year, I think, well, can't getting better. And then every year, it's every bit as good or better than the year before. And so it was a very nice ceremony Friday afternoon evening. And here's just a few of the pieces of artwork. Obviously, the group is standing with students who were recognized as a result of that show. And then we also have the New Mexico Scholastic Arts Award, and Dr. Kurt Schmidt will discuss the New Mexico Scholastic Arts Award and will explain to you how students earn their recognition. He will also introduce Ms. Diane Lee from Rio Rancho High School and Liz Olive from Cleveland High School, who are teachers of these students and have helped directed and supported them through this process. And the students that we'll be recognizing, Caitlin Opie from Cleveland High School, who had a silver key in animation, Shereen Kamali from Cleveland, one silver key in drawing and illustration, one gold key in mixed media, three gold keys in drawing and illustration, and then Natalie Henson from Rio Rancho High, a silver key in photography, and Lila Splatling from Rio Rancho High School, an honorable mention in comic art. This is a very prestigious recognition for these students, and some of them are the same students that were here on Friday evening. And then Dr. Happy Miller will be presenting the ESSA Accountability Model and Report for this year, well, actually for last year, for the twenty-three, twenty-four. This system has been a work in progress since two thousand and fifteen, so it's ten years old now. But of course, the pandemic wrecked havoc on that assessment effort and was kind of getting back to what it was before. ESSA is the Every Student Succeeds Act. That's a federal program. And Dr. Miller will discuss the key elements of the accountability model and share some of the current challenges that some of the district and some of our schools are facing with regards to this system. And then we have nominations for the New Mexico School Board Excellence and Student Achievement Award. Each year, the Rio Rancho Public School Board of Education can nominate individuals who have impacted student achievement in our district and in our community. The administration has given the board one name for consideration, but the board can certainly nominate and add others to the list as well. We are not limited to a single nominee. The first nominee award is a courtesy of the New Mexico School Boards Association, and the others are the responsibility of the local district. But this is just a way of saying thank you to people who have really worked hard in our community to support students. And they can be people in the community. It can be staff members. But they, you know, the criteria is that they've worked hard to improve teaching and learning and student achievement and success in our school district. Then we have some policy reviews this evening. The board will review suggested changes for seven policies this evening. Since this is the second reading for the proposed policy changes, the board is asked to consider approving the changes after having had two weeks to review them. All changes have been proposed by the Executive Director of the department that that particular policy covers, and then all of those changes have been reviewed and approved by our legal department. We'll be looking at Policy seven oh seven, Labor Management Relations, Policy seven oh nine, Staff Personal Security and Safety, Policy seven fifteen, Reporting Acts of Violence and Vandalism, Policy seven fifty, COVID nineteen pandemic, and all of those will be presented by Mike Chavez, who is our Executive Director of H R. And then the last one that we'll be looking at is Drug Free Schools, and the student part of that policy. And David Mann, Rio Rancho Public Schools Legal Counsel, will present that information to the board. Are there any questions or any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Appreciate it. All right, we'll go to approve the prioritized agenda and proposed time allocations.
Madam President, this is Board Member Tyler. I'll make a motion to approve the prioritized agenda and proposed.
Board Member Gary Tripp, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jessica Tyler and a second by Gary Tripp. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Four zero. All right, we'll now go into our commendations, as Dr. Cleveland was announcing earlier. So we'll start with our first one, which is the N M A S S P two thousand and twenty-five Assistant Principal of the Year Award for Guadalupe Gallegos. So Andrew Pierce, our principal at Rio Rancho Middle School, he will present. And he can invite up whoever. There we go. Coming, coming.
Dr. Cleveland, President Galbraith, and members of the board, I am so honored just to present my friend and colleague, Guadalupe Gallegos, who was awarded the New Mexico Association of Secondary Schools Principals Assistant Principal of the Year Award. And Guadalupe, if you know her, she's tenacious. She leads with her heart and her mind at the same time, and she's really remarkable. And she just sees people. And if I can just brag on her a bit, she came to us in the midst of COVID. We had just lost our principal, Linda Kits, tragically. And I remember when we were hiring people, we were talking about candidates, the team said, our school needs Guadalupe. And they could never, you know, they couldn't be more correct about that. She has come in and just she brings zeal and zest to her job. She loves kids, families, staff members. And if you see her at work, and if you catch her on the right day, she'll be singing in the cafeteria for the kids. But it was when she was nominated, and then it was announced that she had won, it was a real victory for our entire school community because you have here a woman who is a champion for your kids. I would want my children to be under her care, and I'm just honored to work with her each and every day. So I'd like to present Guadalupe Gallegos.
If you'd like to say.
Thank you, Andy. So kind. And I'd like to say thank you to the board here and for everybody. It's a beautiful district that we work in. It's a very beautiful district where we are supported to put students first. And that's our that should be our goal. And putting students first, we make good decisions. And I and then taking care of staff, we're able to keep students first. So thank you for that. I appreciate the honor of working in our district.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. We'll give you another round of applause. As it goes, don't Gary Tripp wants to say something, okay?
Don't go anywhere.
No, it's my fault for being weird.
So this is pretty emotional for me, so I'll try to get through my words real quick. So those of you that don't know, Guadalupe Gallegos' grandma is a Baca. Her grandma and my and my mom are sisters, so we are cousins. But I just wanted to say that on behalf of Teresa and Joseph, Guadalupe lost her mom, who we dearly loved in our family during this pandemic time. And on behalf of Scott Affentrainger, I'll make it on a lighter note because I know you took care of that school before you went to Rio Rancho. And I know Scott would say that that you were so great at serving those kids. And I know Tim Flotis would say you're a great, great track coach. And thank you for taking care of all those track kids. So on behalf of Northern New Mexico, where you come from, because I know there's a lot of people from Las Vegas in this community, and on behalf of our family, great job. Keep it up. Keep loving those kids. I'm so proud of you. Congratulate. Thank you.
Thank you. That's so good. Dr. Cleveland, do you want to add anything?
Okay, my, I've had a couple of opportunities to work on things with with Guadalupe. One case involved a student that really needed a lot of help and support. And she stepped up and helped the student through incredibly rough time. And she just does that over and over again for many, many students. And so this is so well deserved. And so we congratulate you and we thank you for all of your years of service to this school district and for making a difference every single day in the job that you do. So congratulations and very well deserved.
Thank you. Don't sit down yet.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, like, we should not have allowed Gary to go first because then we can't really, like, compare to that. But congratulations on the recognition. So well deserved and very happy for you.
Thank you.
Yes, so proud of you and for you. And we appreciate all you do for our students. Thank you so much.
And now, if you want to break out in song, no, I'm just kidding. But thank you for coming in and thank you for all you do for our students. I hear good things coming from from your school, so to both of you. But I'm just, it's always wonderful to hear these things are happening in Rio Rancho Public Schools. And we do, we have we have such a great district, and we have great administrators who care for our kids. And I see it time and time again. So thank you so much for everything that you do.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, next, we'd like to invite up Christine Prescott, our Principal of Vista Grande Elementary. And she's going to talk about the Vista Grande RAMP program. And anyone that you want to help come up with you.
Before you get started, when they came up the first time, I would want you to know, Principal Prescott, that I turned to the board president and I said, they'll be back. And so there you are.
And I wrote a few words because I get really emotional about about our people and all of that. So, good evening, President Galbraith, Dr. Cleveland, and distinguished members of the board. It is with great honor that I speak about the amazing news that we received a couple of weeks ago. I'd like to introduce Angel Brown and Katie Doss again. We are very grateful for them at Vista Grande for their enormous impact they make every day at our school. Angel has been at Vista Grande as a counselor since two thousand and fifteen. And she is, as you know, the two thousand and twenty-four New Mexico School Counselor of the Year. And then Katie Doss has been in RRPS for twelve years and has been at Vista Grande since two thousand and twenty-one. And she is the two thousand and seventeen New Mexico School Counselor of the Year. So we are just so thrilled to have them both at our school. As you guys know, RAMP stands for the Recognized ASCA Model Program, and their RAMP designation recognizes schools committed to delivering an exemplary school counseling program. I just wanted to explain a little bit about it because I had to learn a lot about it. And so honorees are awarded for aligning the program with the criteria in the ASCA National Model Framework for a data informed school counseling program. And since the program's inception in twenty in two thousand and four, thirteen hundred schools nationwide have received this designation, where the fifth in New Mexico and the first in Rio Rancho Public Schools. So we're excited about that. And then just a little bit about it, research findings indicate that fully implemented school counseling programs are associated with positive educational and social emotional outcomes for kids. So this was a two and a half year long process. When when Katie and Angel talked with me about doing this, of course, we were like, give it the full go. I'm pretty competitive. So we I was like, yep, we're in. We are fully in. It takes a lot of data collection and implementing a lot of programs offerings and lots of collaboration. So we're so grateful to have such a strong Grizzly staff and a community of families and the district's support in all of this. And our counseling program, I was bragging about them because they're amazing. They they're the top tier of counseling programs. They use data to eliminate inequities and barriers, and they identify all of our students' needs. They know every single seven hundred and ninety-seven children at our school. And we use evidence based practices. So just a just a couple more things about them. They teach three over three hundred and forty classes a year. They have over six hundred and ninety-ish minute meetings and with elementary kids that last longer than one minute, like a lot longer. They have small groups that focus on resilience factors and social skills. They do check in and checkouts for attendance. They do individual check ins, and every single Grizzly wants to see them because they love them so much. So that's a lot of check ins. And then they're a huge integral part of our food pantry, which we serve twenty-five kids. That's the Giving Tree holiday lunch, I mean, holiday food baskets on all the things. And then they organize our career day, and I could keep going on. But our school would not be without these two. They're truly the heart of our school, and we are so grateful for everything they give. And we're just super excited. So thank you. And we don't know what to do next.
Do you guys want to say anything before? Okay, please.
We would just like to express our heartfelt gratitude for the unwavering support in in our helping our school program achieve this prestigious RAMP designation. The accomplishment reflects dedication of our entire team, and we are just so thankful for the resources, guidance, and encouragement that our district provides to ensure the success of our students and our staffs.
Yeah, and we are so thankful for the support that we received from you guys and Dr. Cleveland, as well as our district ad school team. I mean, it took everybody, right? Everybody that you see and then some to get this designation. And our families who dealt with all the stress and everything. And without their support, this accomplishment would not be possible. Thank you for recognizing the importance of a comprehensive school counseling program and that it's key for making achievement possible. And our achievement is because you guys were able to recognize that. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Cleveland, do you want to add?
Well, again, congratulations. Like I said, they'd be back. We just had so much confidence that you would you would have earned this recognition, given all the time, effort that you would put into it. And so we do congratulate you, though. It's you don't do it for the recognition, but it's surely nice when you get it after you've worked so hard that other people recognize that excellence. And and it's just, we're really excited for you. So congratulations. And we also we appreciate the support at the district level that Mariah Affentrainger gives us as well. And we are very proud of our counselors, and we're very proud of our counseling program. And we believe it's one of the really key foundations for student success. And without that, many of our students would not succeed at the level that they do. So again, we thank you and we congratulate you.
Thank you. Gary Tripp?
I just want to say thank you to you and the whole staff at Vista Grande because you're their you're their hope every single day. And just thank you for loving them. Thank you.
Yes, I can just tell by your enthusiasm and your strong love for your students. That's very contagious. And I'm sure they see that. And they appreciate that as well as their families. And we appreciate each of you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm always partial to our Grizzlies since my kiddos were Grizzlies and appreciate the work because it can be a daunting task, right, to seek something like this and the amount of time that you put into it. So congratulations on achieving the recognition. And if I don't, if I my memory serves me right, wasn't there another school that was going to also was applying? And you guys will be able to mentor them through that process now. So always great when we can then replicate that success to other areas. So thank you guys for being willing to take that on as well. So congratulations.
Thank you. And I love I love our counselors. I'm always actually amazed. My youngest daughter, she would like she I mean, she she did not have you as her counselors, but she would always be like, I'll just talk to my counselor. This was when she was in middle school. And they like developed this really sweet relationship where she could just help her with everything. And I think that's our kids need that, right? And so as we say, like, you have a ton of individual students, right, to work with. But they really, it really does make a huge difference. And so on those days where you're like, just please know that we're so grateful for everything that you're doing. And what an amazing achievement. So great job. So all right. Thank you. Okay, our next will be on our New Mexico Scholastic Arts. So we'll invite Dr. Kurt Schmidt, our Executive Director of Fine Arts, to come up. And I'll let him introduce all those who he'd like to help come up with.
Good evening, President Galbraith, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board. I'm going to introduce two teachers who'll introduce the students tonight. These students are there are four students in total, who, as you see, will produce some wonderful art, very talented young artists. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Liz Olive and Ms. Diane Lee to come on forward. Ms. Olive will say a few words about New Mexico Scholastic Arts in general, and then speak about her students. And then Ms. Leah will talk about her students and their accomplishments. So. We'd have the students come up, too.
Hi, everybody. I wrote stuff down because I'm not. Anyway, good evening, board members and everybody here. First and foremost, thank you for your recognition of these students and their amazing achievements. The Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards were established in nineteen twenty-three to encourage, foster, and reward creativity in our nation's classrooms. It is the largest, longest running, and most prestigious student recognition program in America, not just in the arts, but like across the board. Every single student in grade seven through twelve in the United States or in U.S. run schools overseas is eligible to enter. Throughout its over ninety year history, the Scholastics Program has provided early recognition to some of our nation's most celebrated artists and writers, including Andy Warhol, Richard Avedon, Truman Capote, Joyce Carol Oates, and Robert Redford. The contest begins by state and then folds into a national event. Every gold key work is entered into the national competition, and we'll know the results from that probably like mid-March. I think they said March twenty-sixth. I'll let you guys know as soon as I know. So I have been told this is an odd quality for an art teacher, but I'm a numbers person. So let's look at some numbers. This year, over a thousand works of art were entered from New Mexico and El Paso, and only about three hundred and fifty were award winners. So that means only thirty-five percent of students' art that was entered was awarded, and eight of those came from RRPS. The so only the gold and silver key winners are in the actual exhibition, which is gorgeous. If you ever get a chance to go downtown Albuquerque, it's at the Orpheum, and we'll be there through March. Yeah, through March first. Beautiful work. So only gold and silver key winners are at the actual exhibition totaling a hundred and eighty-five pieces. This means that show had an eighteen percent acceptance rate, and seven of those works came from RRPS. We may be a small district, but our contributions to the arts are significant. So thank you again for recognizing these amazingly talented students and continuing to support art in our schools.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Shereen and Caitlin both got work in. Shereen had five pieces in these very anxious drawings and other things you see up here. And Caitlin had a beautiful animation that I unfortunately can't take credit for because she made it during a summer camp. But she's my student now, so I'll take that.
And the two students that are from Rio Rancho High School who won awards, that would be Leila with her comic piece that you comic art is what you entered your work into. And I believe that was a piece you did on your own, right? Yeah. So it was so she was in my class last semester, but she did the piece on her own. And then Natalie Henson, and she entered a piece that she actually did in my class for an assignment, which I don't give the kids a whole lot of guidance on what to enter. I feel like they should just pick the pieces they feel like their best works. But she did pick a piece that she did in my class. So you'll see that image up on the screen as well. And I'm very proud of both of them and all of them for their achievements.
Thank you. Thank you. So good students. Go ahead.
And one thing, you've seen the two D images up there. We do have a clip of the animation. It's about thirty seconds long. Who's was that?
Yeah, it was so good. I watched it earlier. Yeah. So good.
Stop taking.
You'll be back. You'll be.
That captures Shwarma right there perfectly.
I know.
Any questions or?
I don't know if any of the students would like to say anything. We'd love to hear if you guys are planning to move ahead in art or what kind of plans you have. So if anyone would like to come up and and discuss it. But you don't have to. We don't ever want to put you on the spot, but we'd love to hear from you.
Years in a row, you guys. Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna submit next year, too. Thank you, Ms. Olive, for helping me get in the deadline on time. So, yeah.
Great job. That's what teachers are for, right? Good. And I can't remember. So do you have I can't I know you were here. So do you have plans to move like in college? And what's your what's your plan? I can't remember.
Well, I want to go to NYU right now. I want to go through the arts program and get a bachelor's degree through the arts. Not really sure where I'm gonna go from there. But yeah, do you want to continue?
That's wonderful. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other students like to say anything? Come on in.
First, I wanted, she rather downplayed her contributions. I want to thank Ms. Olive. Without her, I wouldn't have known the Scholastic Competition was a thing that I could submit to. So, thank you. And I'm planning to engage in some sort of animation program. Surprise, surprise. Such a shock. Whether it be at NMSU or somewhere in Chicago, I haven't quite decided on the details yet, but I, that's what I'm currently looking into and I'm really excited to be able to make more art and I hope to submit next year, be it in the same category or a different one.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thanks for sharing. Either of you like to share. You don't have, you do not have to. We just love hearing from you guys.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Leah because before I was in her class, I didn't even know that like photography was something that I thought like that I was interested in. And I didn't even know the Scholastic Art thing was like, was, I didn't know it existed until I was in her class and I heard about it. And so, I just want to say thanks to her because without like her class and like the pictures we took in her class, like I wouldn't know about any of this.
Thanks. Awesome. She's like peer pressure.
I feel like my art could have been better. It didn't really have a meaning because I just kind of wanted to get something in before the deadline. So, next year, I'm probably going to do better and come up with a better story.
It's beautiful though. That's how you learn, by doing. Well, and I want to let the board and Dr. Cleveland say something, but I do have a question. So, tomorrow I'm teaching a little bit on how to try to overcome perfectionism. And I actually love your guys' art pieces. Would you guys mind if I showed my classes, your art pieces tomorrow? I think it's one of the best ways to teach students is looking at art and the emotion that comes from that. So, as I looked at them today, I was like, oh, these are so perfect to start my class off tomorrow as we, as we look at those things because there's so much emotion that came from what you put in. And even if you don't feel like you put your whole heart into it, there was, there was just beautiful, beautiful artwork. And so, if that's what happens when you don't put everything into it, I'm really excited to see what's going to come from it. So, thank you, students, and thank you, teachers, for all that you do. I love the arts and so, thank you so much for supporting that. Dr. Cleveland, did you want to add anything?
I would just, I would add again, thank you to our staff members for all the time and effort that you put in and you put in a lot. And to our students, you have amazing talent and I hope you'll continue to cultivate it and grow it. We look at the, just the potential that you have. It's just amazing. And as I said the other night at the, at the junior/senior show, it's, I hope everyone knows what a big deal this is because this is really exceptional. The number of students from Rio Rancho who did so well. And we're proud of all of our fine arts programs. We are particularly proud of our visual arts program and the work that you do. So, again, congratulations and I hope that you'll continue to use that amazing talent that you all have demonstrated. And Kurt, we thank you for your leadership as well, support.
Thank you. Gary Tripp, do you want to add anything?
I just want to say congratulations. A bunch of champions. Wonderful to see. Just.
Simply beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Gary was my first principal when I started teaching at Rio Rancho 26 years ago, Rio Rancho High School. So, I want to thank him.
Thank you.
That is awesome. That is awesome. And Beth, did you want to add anything?
Well, congratulations to all of you, students and staff and your families and just keep cultivating your talent here. But I think that will go over to other areas of your life and we just look forward to hearing and seeing great things from you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Yeah, and I just wanted to comment on the fact that the students called out their teachers for making them aware of this opportunity. And I think that goes such a long way in life, right? So, if you're able to take that leadership and learning new things and learning about other opportunities that are out there, that goes so far in life and great that we are able to do that within our district. So, again, I think that's a testament to Dr. Schmidt's leadership, but also for you guys empowering your students to do it. You know, not everybody takes the time to do that. So, appreciate that and congratulations to you guys. Amazing. I can like barely draw stick figures, so I'm always in awe of it and your artwork is incredible. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. We'll move to the next part of our meeting today, which shows our reports. And we just have one tonight, which is the Data Accountability Report. And Happy Miller, Dr. Happy Miller, our Executive Director of RADA, will present this.
Good evening, President Galbraith, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board. I am, this is my annual report to you to inform you of the changes in the school accountability model from the state's plan and also to caution you not to compare the points that schools earned this year to the points that they earned last year. And that will become abundantly clear as you see all of the changes in methodology from last year to this. Next slide, please. The state does have a website, newmexicovistas.org, ninvistas.org, where you can see the data for the schools. The data is released in two stages. In November, they release the school accountability points and designations. And in January, they add additional data that is federally required. There's a list there. The school accountability data is accurate. We have gone through very stringent verification. The, some of the additional data that was released in January, we currently have appeals in two areas and they did add a caution in a third area disclaimer. That disclaimer is under educator qualifications. They are federally required to categorize schools as high poverty or low poverty. So, look at the distribution of new teachers or teachers teaching out of field. And because all of our schools participate in the state-funded Free and Reduced Lunch Program, all of our schools appear to be high poverty. So, they have added a disclaimer saying participation in the program may sort of give the perception of poverty levels in our district that don't exist. Next slide, please. The state initially submitted a plan under the ESA Act in 2017. It was revised in 2021 due to the pandemic. In 2023, PED issued a rule and MAX 6.19.8 that changed some of the model. And then, they submitted amendment to the plan in 2024 to the US Department of Education and that was approved at the end of October. So, the good news is hopefully next year, I will not be coming back to you and saying, here are all the changes in the plan again. Hopefully, we are done with these yearly changes because they now have a new plan that's been accepted by the US Department of Education and a technical manual. And so, if there are changes, hopefully they are very small tweaks and hopefully this is now the baseline for future years. Next slide, please. In the elementary and middle school model, 80% of the points come from proficiency and growth, 50% from ELA, math and science proficiency. ELA stands for English Language Arts, 30 from growth, and then 10 points for English learner progress on the access test to measure their English language development in reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and 10 points for regular attendance, which is the inverse of chronic absenteeism. Next slide, please. At the high school level, there are some changes. Only schools that have grade levels below nine, so like Rio Rancho Cyber Academy also has students in grades six through eight, they're the only high schools that have growth points. Because with the change in the growth model which I'll describe, they need to have data for multiple years and there's a three-year gap from eighth grade to 11th grade for tested years. So, Cyber Academy does have growth points. The other three high schools in the district do not. They also add college and career readiness and a number of categories for graduation and graduation growth. Next slide, please. I think we're one too far. There we go. Thanks. These are the assessments that are used in calculating the proficiency scores. They, basically, it's students in grades three through eight and 11. All students participate, even the students that are most significantly cognitively disabled, they participate through an alternate assessment called the DLM. We have the raw scores from the vendor and then we have the scores that count in the accountability model. Those scores that count in the accountability model are for those students that were enrolled at the school on the 120th day, which is the second week in February, this Wednesday is 120th day, and end of year, and were enrolled at the school for 90 days. So, we have our vendor data and then we have our accountability data and those, one is a subset of the other, which makes it confusing and partly why when there, people would like PED to release the data early publicly, they're only recent, releasing the accountability data and they need to have information about who was there and have the certified end-of-year enrollment. So, that's part of the reason for the delay and PED releasing that data. This year, there is a major change in the way that they calculate proficiency. There is the proficiency rate, which is the percentage of students who scored proficient or advanced out of all students who tested. And there is the proficiency index. The proficiency index says that students that are nearing proficient earn half a point. So, if you're at the lowest level, you earn zero points. If you are nearing proficient, you earn half a point. If you are proficient, you earn one point. And if you are advanced, you earn 1.25 points. And the points are based on this proficiency index. So, that's a major change from last year where it was just a percentage of students that were in performance levels three or four. This will help schools as they move students up from one level to another to have that register in the data. And so, overall, I think it's a good thing. It's just a very different way of calculating it. Next slide. Last year, one thing they did is they took the state targets and said, if you reach the state target, you get all of the points. And if you don't reach the state target, then you get a prorated amount up to that state target. This year, the state targets do not, are not included in the calculations of points at all. And so, it is the total points divided by the number of students in the accountability model that have a score. So, again, don't compare scores because there's very different methodology for calculating the scores. Next slide, please. Another major change is with ELA, math and growth. Because of the pandemic, we had some years where we didn't have data. 2020, we had no data. 2021, there was very little data statewide. So, they couldn't look at prior scores to predict future scores. What they did is they said, what percentage of your students were proficient in this year and compared it to a prior year and said, here's your growth. You went up by five points from last year. The state average growth was three points. You were higher than average, therefore you get X number of points. Now, they have enough prior data that they can look at individual student growth over time. So, for students in grades four through eight and only four through eight because grade three is the first year in which they test, so that's the baseline year. Based on their third grade score, they look at all students in third grade who scored at that scale score in third grade and then look to see how they score in fourth grade. Did they score the typical amount for other students across the state at that level? Did they score higher? Did they score lower? And so, that's called a student growth percentile. And what they do is they take the middle score, the median score, and say, this is the school's median student growth percentile. They say if a school's median growth percentile is between 34 and 66, that represents typical growth. Many of our schools, especially in math, score well, you know, on that upper end or above typical growth. And again, the methodology's totally changed. The way points are assigned is totally changed. Now, it's the median individual student growth percentile times the possible points. It's not relative to how other schools have done. It's relative to other students who started at that grade level and that same performance level. Next slide, please. English learner progress is very similar. This is looking at where a student scored the first time they took the Access English Language Development Test. And then, there's a chart that gives them five years to become proficient. Proficient is defined as a 4.7 on the test now, which is a change. It used to be a five and now it's a 4.7. That was changed about two years ago. And so, the question is, did they meet their target? Where are they and how many years have they been there? Did they meet their target and what percentage of students met their target? That basic methodology has remained the same. The chart itself has been simplified a little bit due to the changes in the scores. And again, no more state target is included, so the method for assigning points has changed. Next slide, please. Regular attendance is essentially the inverse of chronic absenteeism. It is the percentage of students intending more than 90% of the school days enrolled. The difference compared to last year is that now only those students that meet the full academic year qualifications and they define that as being there the 120th day, end of year, and for 90 days, only those students are included in the calculations last year, all students regardless of whether, how long they'd been at the school and whether they met those criteria were included. And again, change in the way that points are assigned. College and career readiness, the next slide, please, is for high schools only. It is a lagged data point and that is based on the percentage of students who participate in a college and career readiness event such as the PSAT, ACT, CTE, et cetera. SAT is also in there right now. They may tick out the SAT school day because that is the measure for high school students for the English and math proficiency. And it's as a cohort. And so, you get a certain number of points based on participation and a certain number of points if you meet the college and career readiness benchmark, for example, a 530 on math in the SAT. Next slide, please. Graduation. This is again, a lagged data point. Currently on ninvistas.org, it shows the rate for the class of 2023. PED has not yet published the data for the class of 2024. That should be coming out probably within the next month. But on New Mexico Vista, it is a lagged data point. So, four-year rate for the class of 2023, five-year rate for the class of 2022, six-year rate for the class of 2021. Graduation growth is class of 2023's rate subtracting the rate for the class of 2021 and then dividing by two. There may be some changes in the cohort membership rules. there has been a business rule change from this federal government that before, in order to be counted, you had to be here two consecutive snapshots in order to be included in the cohort. And then, it was based on your grade level at that time. The federal government said, no, that was a misunderstanding of the federal rules. It is anytime. So, if they're here across any snapshot at any time, even if they're only with us for two weeks, they're part of the cohort. And there is some discussion. It is in the graduation handbook. There are students on a standard graduation option, a modified graduation option, an ability graduation option, and students on the ability graduation option may end up with an alternate diploma and be able to count as a graduate. Students on a modified graduation option will not be considered a graduate for federal graduation rate purposes because they didn't have the same requirements for graduation. So, the state is negotiating with the US Department of Education for a timeline and there are some changes in the recently released graduation handbook. and there are some changes in the recently released graduation handbook. But we are looking at that modified graduation option and what the impact could be to rates, especially if the US Department of Education says you can't, you know, phase it out. For our graduation rates, we have to say they're not a graduate, even though at the time that they entered that pathway, we thought they do qualify as a graduate. So it's a negotiation between the state and the US Department of Education, and that's beyond my pay grade. But there may be changes happening to the federal graduation rates that could affect the future. Again, there's no state target that's included in the calculations for the points. But otherwise, there aren't major changes this year in the graduation methodology. Based on the number of points, PED assigns schools a designation. If you are in the top 25% of points, so that's relative to the other schools around the state. Elementary and middle are in one bucket, and high school on a different bucket. They are considered spotlight schools. Traditional schools are in good standing. They don't have a federal designation. Targeted support and improvement schools and additional targeted support and improvement schools designations are for schools that have subgroups that are performing below certain cut scores. And comprehensive support and improvement schools, CSI, are for school scoring in the bottom 5% of Title I schools overall, or that have a graduation rate below 67%. If you are in the CSI category for three years and you do not meet the exit criteria, then you go into another category called most rigorous interventions. And that can also apply to schools with graduation rates below 66.7%. Please note that the designation of excellence, which you've had in the past, which was in the initial plan meant for indicators. So you might be a school struggling overall, but you were really good with EL Progress. You could have had a designation of excellence for that indicator in EL Progress. The state removed that from their plan. And so the designation of excellence does not exist anymore in the state plan. Next slide, please. State statute requires that school districts publish an accountability report annually. PED has been speaking with the newspaper association. They believe that publishing the link to the report card in New Mexico Vista should suffice, but they have been providing some guidance. And the district will, at some point in the near future, publish something in the Observer with the link and possibly a little bit more information in order to meet the state statute. These are the points and the designations for elementary schools. You can see that they're all either traditional or spotlight. Next slide, please. These are the points and designations for our secondary schools. And again, they're all traditional or spotlight, with the exception of Independence High School, which is in the MRI graduation category due to their graduation rate. As an alternative high school, you are well aware that they accept, that only accepts students pretty much who are behind in credits. And so having them fully caught up by the end of the fourth year is very challenging. And with that, I stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. That was good. Dr. Cleveland, do you want to add? And then we'll go to questions.
Just a couple of things. The, it does continue to plague all alternative schools in New Mexico. There needs to be, for alternative schools, another, another standard. Many states have a three, three additional years for students who come in that far behind in credits. So hopefully, in the future, the state will be able to renegotiate that and have something that's more reflective of other states. Because if you come in considerably behind, it is hard to graduate within that timeframe. But our philosophy as a district is, if it's fifth or sixth year, that's better than not graduating at all. And so we do provide that support, and we really stand behind Independence for the really fine work they do and hope at some point that they'll rethink the way they do the designation for alternative schools because none can, none of them are, are meeting that standard that I'm aware of. The other thing I would like, and I would like, Dr. Miller, just to share very briefly. We've been involved in a study with the University of New Mexico about the impact of COVID on our students. And I don't know, I mean, if you'd be willing to just kind of just give the highlights of that study. But the, the study basically, you know, if you, if you want it in a really big nutshell, is that 40% of our students were pretty adversely affected by the pandemic. The second was that, in many cases, it's not getting better for these students. And in some cases, it's gotten even more difficult for them. And there were several other findings, but the findings out of the study, and they're getting ready to be published, I think, really points to us that, number one, we aren't imagining that some of our students are really struggling in school and have not been able to turn the corner yet, and that we've got to think differently about how we support these students. I wasn't surprised at all to hear that it had, I mean, I think everyone working in the field was surprised to hear that our students are still struggling. What I was shocked to see is it was 40% of our students. So anything you would add to that? But it was a really interesting study. A happy was kind of our liaison. Suzanne Nguyen helped with that. So did a couple of other folks, Mariah Affentrager and some. But it's still continuing to impact our students' success. And so we are really having to think about how we deal with that 40% of our students that really appear to have been adversely, you know, impacted. So anything else you would add to that?
The findings have not been published yet, and that's from Phase One. She is going to work on a Phase Two to try to find out more about why were some students impacted more than others? In general, the age range they were looking at were elementary school students, students that were in grades three through five in 2023, and looking at visual and spatial development. And she talked about there being a critical period where effects of myelination within the brain, and talked, in general, many of our students were further down the continuum than pre-pandemic in terms of growth with visual and spatial. And she talked about the cognitive effects that could have. But the scary thing is, is that almost all of our students have very negative emotional associations with that time. And so it's not just those 40%. Those are the ones we're most concerned about. But all of our students have this trauma that is still within them. And while it may present now as increased rates of anxiety and other, I don't know if I have the proper terminology, conditions that over time, it can grow to more and more severe mental illnesses. And that we may end up, you know, over time with even more behavior and more pressing issues of our students globally, not just here in Rio Rancho, but globally. And what she's finding seems to confirm what they're finding in other countries as well. I did also want to go back. Dr. Cleveland mentioned the issue with alternative high schools is great. There are currently 43 schools statewide that are either in CSI or MRI designation for graduation rate, and most of those are alternative high schools, not all.
Anything else? Okay. And we'll go to questions. Thank you. Thank you for that, too. And that study, though, that's, it's actually kind of terrifying and saddens myself. So anyway, Gary Tripp.
I don't have a question this year, or several questions this year. I have a comment because I studied this all weekend. And it was a really great report Dr. Miller gave, but I was trying to put it in perspective. Last week, the state of New Mexico and every newspaper across the state was quick to report that New Mexico student reading scores ranked last as a nation, and we still struggle to rebound from the pandemic. That was the topic almost in the middle of the week last week in every newspaper in the state. And it got me really thinking, and then your report made me stay up all weekend. And, and, and what I wanted to say to all the, the district administrators and all the teachers is, you know, we focus on ELA, we focus on science, we focus on math, and now our other common denominator is the social-emotional learning of our children. Our glass is pretty full with respect to all these scores. We're doing an outstanding job, and I hope we don't get into the bureaucracy that I call at the state and federal level, that they give us something like this. That takes a lot of work for somebody to do. But I want to just thank, I just want to thank all the employees of the Rio Rancho District, and I mean, all the employees, operational side, everybody, that we truly believe in ELA. We believe in science scores, we believe in math scores, and we believe in the social-emotional learning of our children. So thank you.
Thank you. Beth Miller?
Just echo what Gary said, but I also have grandchildren in two different states, and I am worried about them from results of pandemic. They're good students, and their teachers try hard, just like they do here, all the staff involved. But it is very concerning. And so I, I look forward to this study that you talked about with U and M and just see what happens here in the next few years. But thank you very much for all your work on this, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thanks. Go Jessica.
Yeah, just thank you again for all your hard work. I know it's difficult when they are constantly changing the criteria of what we're measuring, and we can't compare from year to year. And always appreciate the time that you take to prepare your reports and explain the differences and what's being measured, and that we can't compare this year's data to last year. I think that's a really key takeaway for the public to, to realize as well. And also just congratulations overall to our district because we have a great district, and it shows through the scoring. So thank you.
Yeah, and thank you. And I just, yeah, to what everyone says, I just want to say thank you. It was a great report. Happy, thank you for going through all of those things. And, and yeah, that study, I'm quite interested in it. It's interesting to see what kind of what's happened to our students. And I even think about during that time, just because one of my kids was in elementary school at the time, and just how we missed, I think, diagnosing some things, you know? And then kids moved on. And I think that's the, I think that's a hard thing, too, that we're trying to recover from because those are some crucial years, right? And there, you know, and we didn't have students in, so we didn't see all of those different things. So anyway, hopefully, what we do have, right, is a wonderful district. Just like we were saying, we have wonderful principals and system principals, and many of them are here tonight with us. And, and I'm just grateful for all the hard work everyone's putting forth to, to continue the work in our district. We have a great district. And so thanks for putting this report together just so we could understand all of those things that are coming out a little bit better.
I would just add one thing. We are very much aware, we've got work to do. You know, we look at this, and we have got plenty of work to do. But you're right, we've got the team that can, can do that, and people who can pull together and move forward. In a sense, the study was kind of an affirmation that we weren't all just kind of imagining some things, you know? That they really were there, but we knew they were there. But that being said, now, we've got to move forward, and we've got to find a way to deal with these issues and, and move forward, and we're very committed to, to doing that. I would also add, I think one of the reasons that we are moving forward is, and it was mentioned earlier, but it is the commitment to social-emotional learning and support. Our counselors, our other, other means we've invested in over the last several years will help us get through this time, I think, easier than perhaps some other districts that did not make that investment. So we've got work to do. We're aware that we have work to do, but we have a good team to, to, to take it on.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just, you know, just as Dr. Cleveland's talking, I just have to say, you know, I have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Cleveland every other week, just as we set up agendas for meetings and such. And I think I, I've just come to appreciate that so much from you, is that you're never settling or thinking that's where we should be, but you're always looking ahead and how we can grow. And so thank you for doing that for our district. It has been very much appreciated over the years. Okay, so we don't have any public comment tonight, neither on, I know, neither on our online or in person. And so if anyone would like to do that, you're always welcome to come into the boardroom and sign up before the meeting starts. But we'll now go to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Gary Tripp and a second by Beth Miller. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. 4-0. Okay. And we'll go into our business portion, and we don't have a lot on here tonight, but we're going to start with our first, which is to consider the nomination for the New Mexico School Board Association Excellence in Student Achievement Award. Janice and all, our elementary school improvement officer, will present the nomination from our district office. And once again, of course, like as a school board, we are welcome to nominate anyone else if there's someone else. But go ahead, Jan.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the school board, and Dr. Cleveland. We're recommending Senator Craig Brant for this award, the New Mexico School Board Association Excellence in Student Achievement Award for his advocacy for Rio Rancho Public Schools, his support for career and technical education, preschool advocacy, funding for key initiatives, and most recently, math labs at two of our elementary schools. As a former school board member, parent, grandparent, he understands the needs of our students firsthand and works tirelessly to improve their opportunities. And so we are making a recommendation for him for this award.
Dr. Cleveland, do you want to add anything?
He is certainly very deserving, and he has served on the school board, as you know, in the past. And has always been very supportive of, of our, our efforts to do well in our district for our students and has helped us in so many different ways, not only in terms of some of the grants, but just also advocating for the needs of our district. So he is certainly a very worthy nominee for your consideration.
Yeah.
Is there to be a motion? And if there's another name, is it after that that another name could come up?
Yeah, so we can do a motion for, for the first name, or we can even, if there's someone else that we want, we can even, I think, move to do both of them at the same time if we want to discuss a second name. So we can discuss another name currently.
We could, okay. So I concur with the comments of Senator Brant. I think it'd be a wonderful choice. But to bring up another name that I think would be deserving of this recognition is Julian Garza, who is a business leader in our community, who has been a proponent of grants and donations and hiring our children and really doing anything he possibly can to move education forward in our community for, I think, almost 30 years now, or 31 years. And he continues to give every time, like Senator Brant, every time you go to them, they continue to investigate and see, okay, what will it take in order to make sure that our kids succeed? So I just, on, on top of recommending Senator Craig Brant, I'd also like to recommend Mr. Julian Garza, the owner of McDonald's here in Rio Rancho.
He's been great. I can't remember, I don't think we've done him in the past. Is it, do we have anything? I don't think we've.
I think we've taken them together.
But we haven't put him as a student achievement award in the past.
We have not, to my recognition. And it wouldn't matter if you had.
Yeah.
Because an individual can be nominated. This is a, a single year, but it's just anyone that has made a difference in student success and achievement. It can be, as I said earlier, it can be from within the district, it can be from outside the district. But it, it's just, and it's not limited to one or two. It's, the board can certainly nominate as many as you feel are worthy. And some years, we've had one, and some years, we've had, I think, three. So it's certainly up to the board how you would like to proceed with that.
Yeah, I think that's great, Gary. Other comments from?
I agree.
Okay. Any other, any additional names that need to be brought up? I think that was a great, that was a great offering, so thank you.
Madam President, this is Board Member Tyler. I would like to make a nomination for Senator Craig Brant and Citizen Julian Garza for the New Mexico School Board Association Excellence in Student Achievement Award.
Gary Tripp, I'll second.
So a motion by Jessica Tyler and a second by Gary Tripp. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jenna.
Okay. So for the next part of our meeting, we have the second readings for quite a few of our board policies. So I'm going to announce all of these. Let's see, Mike Chavez, are you, okay, we have Mike Chavez and David Mann will be a part of both of these. So the second readings are for Board Policy 707, Labor Management Relations, Board Policy 709, Staff Personal Security and Safety, Board Policy 715, Reporting Acts of Violence and Vandalism. and Vandalism; and Board Policy 750, COVID-19 Pandemic; and Board Policy 1027, Drug-Free Schools and Students. And so once again, we have David Mann, our legal counsel, along with Mike Chavez, who's our Executive Director of Human Services, presenting our second reading of these policies.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board, we actually have very minimal changes, I believe, to the Human Resources 700 Series policies. And so I'm going to defer to my colleague, David Mann, to explain the changes that we're bringing forward on these policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Madam President, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board, just a few changes, and we took into consideration some of the comments you'd made and made sure we incorporated those this time around. So with Board Policy 707, this is Labor Management Relations. Simply here, what we did from last time is we made sure that the prior history was, remained intact at the bottom. So you'll be able to track the history of this, this policy. 709, again, minimal changes. If you recall, Board Member Tyler had pointed out that the first reading referenced employees of the board. There are no employees of the board, per se, but there are employees of the district, and so we, we made that change. 715, no changes. This is just still proposing a straight repeal on this one, leaving it as a plate, leaving an empty placeholder as number 715 for some future policy should they need to rise. Board Policy 750, you'll recall the change, the changes here broaden the scope of the original policy beyond COVID to any state or federal emergency. All we did from last time is we made sure not to delete the version history at the bottom, so that remains intact to trace the history of the prior policies. And those are the 700 series. Moving on to 1027, Sherry was not able to make it today, so she asked me if I'd present this one. There were a few changes to this from our first reading. I'll try and keep it brief and to the point. If you go down to Section F, number two, that's at the bottom of page four. There it is, the top of page four. So Section F, Part Two, we did a little bit of a rewrite. This is the section on discipline for students who refuse a search. And what we wanted to make absolutely clear is that the, the proposal to send someone to a hearing is not solely for refusing their consent to a search, but it's, it's for obstructing investigation, that that's the focus, that by refusing a search, you may be obstructing an investigation. And we wanted to make that clear. It's a little bit of a subtle distinction, but an important one. And as you can see, we also specifically referenced long-term suspension in there. We wanted to make it clear that the conclusion of this is not just to send you to a hearing, but to go to the hearing and ask the hearing officer to uphold some sort of long-term suspension. And we wanted students, parents to be on notice of that and aware of, of what we're actually intending. Section K, we remute, this was Board Member Tyler had said, you know, we're not really in a position to reference promises of granting civil immunity from lawsuit. That's not what we're in the business of doing. But what we can do is grant immunity for good faith reporting from disciplinary actions. If you're an employee, we won't discipline you for reporting. Or if you're a student, we won't discipline you for reporting. We have the authority to do that. So we made that clear in Section K. And then finally, if you go back to page two, we're dancing around a little bit, but on page two, what, this was a, Dr. Schmidt had, had recommended this, that we create a more expansive list of what constitutes school programs. So we're a little bit more inclusive about where, what our expectation of where this, when we expect things to be drug-free. And so that, that would mean curricular, extracurricular, co-curricular, sports, fine arts events, school-sponsored community events. We didn't want to miss any type of event where we expect it to be drug-free. And those are the changes from last reading. I stand for any questions you have.
Okay, questions, Jessica Tyler, any questions? Or Beth Miller? Okay. Dr. Cleveland, did you want to add anything on these ones? So I think if we don't have any concerns on them, I think we could take them all at, at one time, if you want to. But if anyone has a concern, then we'll probably want to pull it. Okay. So I'll, I'll go for a motion. I do want to just thank you guys for all, like, there's so many policies, so thank you so much for going through them. And that so many, I guess, are, are kind of touching through them and kind of keeping an eye on it. So thank you for, for doing that. I appreciate it. And then also, I just want to thank Jessica Tyler for her keen eye. She always sees a lot of the things, you know, us as a board and just, we don't always see. So thank you, too, for that.
Okay, I will make a motion, Madam President, to adopt the proposed changes to Board Policy 707, Labor Management Relations; 709, Staff Personal Security and Safety; 715, Reporting Acts of Violence and Vandalism, which is being repealed; Board Policy 750 for the COVID-19 pandemic, which is being renamed, and to Board Policy 1027, Drug-Free Schools for Students.
Board Member Gary Tripp, I second.
Motion by Jessica Tyler, a second by Gary Tripp. And then why don't we go and do a roll call on this one? We'll call it.
Secretary Tyler?
Yes.
Board Member Tripp?
Yes.
Board Member Miller?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. In the not-so-good old days, the board used to go through these policies page by page themselves. It was not a fun experience. So we thank you more than you know for going through and getting these done. Thank you.
Thank you, and my employer is grateful for that, too. Otherwise, I don't know if I have time to work. So in our advanced planning, just a couple of things coming up. The 12th is a bus rider count day, and the 13th through the 15th is the, which is this weekend, is the Board Institute up in Santa Fe. On the 17th, there's no school for Presidents Day. And then our next meeting will be on the 24th here in this room, and then March 10th, we'll have another meeting. Any questions on anything for advanced planning or anything that needs to be brought up? Good. Okay, our meeting tonight's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And then Jessica, may I have you sign?